We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the October 10, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting. Morning Jackie.
Good morning. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, October 10, 2013 at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Pomeroy County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklois, Sinister County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of September 26, 2013 as submitted. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointment of Joe Malcolm as board member of the Upshur County Fire Board. Mr. Malcolm's term will expire on June 30, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the time for trick or treat to be set for October 31, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in Upshur County, to coincide with the same time already established for the city of Buchanan. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the resignation of Kim Taylor as part-time County Commission Administrative Assistant effective September 30, 2013. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved two advertised for replacement personnel to fill the position of part-time County Commission Administrative Assistant. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the purchase of two replacement vehicles for the office of the Upshur County Sheriff with the provision that all bidding protocol has been followed, and approved and authorized the President to sign loan documents relating to the purchase with Megan Pomeroy as witness. Megan Pomeroy was requested to follow up with Sheriff Kaufman for review. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Progressive Bank as the financing institution for the purchase of the vehicles. After review and discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the Upshur County Financial Statement for fiscal year 2013. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the request from Buchanan Upshur High School to use the Courthouse Plaza for the purpose of a pep rally on Thursday, October 10, 2013, from 6:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Megan Pomeroy advised that the insurance documentation has been received. Ms. Pomeroy was requested to follow up with Greg Harris, Director of Facility Operations. Dell Bennett, Bennett Surveying Representative, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of documentation concerning Webster Street, an obsolete street that was formerly located in the vicinity of Shawnee Drive. Mr. Bennett requested a quick claim deed from the Commission on behalf of property owners. After discussion, the Commission requested Mr. Bennett to furnish additional documentation for review. The item will be placed on a future agenda for action. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the Justice Assistant Grant Award Contract and all related documents for Project Number 13-JAG-27, in the amount of $20,000 for grant period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. The grant provides funding for the PRO Prevention Resource Officer Program at the Buchanan Upshur Middle School. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign reimbursement documents related to the Division of Justice and Community Services, VOCA, V-O-C-A, Victims of Crime Act, Grant Number 13-VA-032. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the following as Upshur County CERT/ OEM volunteers. Wayne Ford, Douglas White, Annette McDonald-Hawk, Betty Grog, Notona Strother, Amanda Harmon, and Nancy Gerlock. Volunteers have completed a 16-hour training course. The Commission discussed a "ride-along" request from Danny Elwood-Stumpf Jr. Megan Pomeroy was requested to follow up with Sheriff David Kaufman for further information. The item will be placed on a future agenda for action. David Durazio and Robert Aha-Johnson Controls Representatives appeared before the Commission and provided an update/status report concerning the preliminary energy audit analysis. Mr. Durazio provided a report with a breakdown of areas and recommendations for each. Mr. Durazio advised that the most significant energy savings would be at the library and the Courthouse Annex building, and made recommendations concerning the rooftop cooling unit. Mr. Durazio advised that under terms of a contract, Johnson Controls would pay the county the difference between the actual and the projected savings. In addition, the county could realize additional savings by using onsite maintenance personnel for installation of equipment with Johnson Controls overseeing design and project management. Donnie Tenny acknowledged and congratulated Debbie Thacker Wilfong, Upshur County Clerk, on her anniversary of 30 years of employment with Upshur County. Terry Jo Bennett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the Commission and reviewed road name requests. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the following road names as listed. Donnie Tenny reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, review correspondence from the city of Buchanan concerning the Gateway East Transportation Enhancement Project, Sidewalk and Streetlight Project through November 15, 2013. Number two, building permit report, September 2013. Number three, Upshur County Dog Warden Report, September 2013. Number four, Upshur County CAT Report, September 2013. And there is an error here. It should be number five, this Upshur County E911 Communications Center report as listed. Six agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Seven meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Eight meetings as listed. Nine appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following requests for time out of office as listed. The Commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. The Commission recessed at 11:00 a.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Department Supervisors at 1:00 p.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Policy Board at 2:10 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 3:20 p.m. And with no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 3:20 p.m.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections? I'd ask for a motion to be approved as such.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you Jackie.
Thank you Jackie. Okay, it's 9:15 and we have Joyce Harris Thacker, Family Resource Network Director and the company. So, welcome Joyce.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us. And yes, it is a big company that we have here today and we're really excited about that. Red Ribbon Week is October the 21st through the 25th in the schools and here in our community. And that is when we tell our community that we are not going to participate in taking drugs. Our theme this year is "A Healthy Me is Drug-Free." We have lots of folks here today to help us celebrate this upcoming week of healthier lives. And so, I'm going to ask, before we read the proclamation, and that our staff, our counselors, our administrators, our principals, and all of the folks that are with Red Ribbon Committee and worked really hard to bring this upcoming week to you, to introduce their students, the students who are why we are here today, and they are the important ones. We want all the folks to see our young people that are here today because we love them and that's why we do what we do. And I know that the staff would like to introduce them and the themes that they're involved with, and so, I'll ask them to come up and bring their group with them. And eventually, we'll have all of the students up here and staff behind us, and we're going to then take the banner and let them hold the banner while we read the proclamation.
Good morning.
Good evening.
I'm Tanya Zikafus and I'm the Counselor at Buchanan Academy Elementary. And every year for Red Ribbon Week, our entire county celebrates together. And we have theme days that celebrate a different aspect of Red Ribbon Week. And so, this year, for the second time, I think, we had different schools choose a day so that they could show you what we're going to be doing in our schools next week. So, I'm not completely certain what day every school has, but I'll ask you guys to help me. Our first day of Red Ribbon Week, which is this coming Monday, the theme is...does anybody know the theme?
We wear red.
We wear red. We have some people in red, so some of our middle schoolers are in red. And the theme is "A Healthy Me for Life." So, middle schoolers, stand out. They're ready and they're red. No, come over this way. How about our Tuesday theme? Do you know who you are? We have Tenderton and Hodgesville Elementary here. Okay, their theme is "Wearing Bright Colors." Do you know what your theme is? They're going to be shy. "Drug-Free Means a Brighter Me." So, you guys come on over this way. Wednesday.
DJ Day. Follow your dreams, drug-free.
Those are my kids. Come on over. Thursday.
They're wearing pajamas, I see.
Yes, pajama day.
We all wish we could do that.
Do you know what your theme is? What is it?
Um, get fit.
Yeah, "Let's Get Fit, Drug-Free." They're in their workout clothes. Those are our French Creek and Rock Cave students. And then Friday, I don't know where they can see that. We have Washington District and Union Elementary, am I right? What's your theme? What is it?
Be on the drug-free team.
Yeah, Team Day. So, come on over. Okay, before we get our Red Ribbon Week banner and have pictures taken with you, we have some red ribbons for you guys to wear next week. And then we also have some pamphlets that talk about the purpose of Red Ribbon Week, a little bit about the history and where it originates from, and then it also has the themes. And we encourage you and everyone else in our community to dress in the themes with our kids. We ask the parents that come to our school during Red Ribbon Week to feel free to do that as well. We actually have a lot of parents do that, at least at my school. Do you guys have parents at your schools that participate?
Is Thursday pajama day?
Wednesday's pajama day.
What's Thursday?
Thursday, wear your workout clothes.
Well, we'll have to wear workout clothes at the Commission meeting next week.
Dig them out of the mothballs.
Good thing it wasn't pajama day.
I won't have to go that far. I was closer than that.
God meant to walk, he wouldn't have given us elevators.
We may have to duck here. Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The big banner.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I like your PJs.
Would that be, would it be better maybe to be down in front of us? Because I don't think you're going to be able to hold that high enough. What do you think, Donnie? If they come below us, they can lay it right here. Or now probably take care of, I'm not saying something.
Okay.
That's what they're saying to be instead of there.
We can put it right down in front here.
Or some of the males held it back and they could be out of photo range.
I think you should say the kid. Because I think it's going to be kind of...
Okay.
What are you saying? So, I don't know. We didn't want to lose another.
Taking charge, Donnie, maybe he should be president.
I know, I'm kind of...
He should be president.
Right up here. Let's get over. There you are today. Are you glad you're out of school?
My sister's still there, so...
Can you get any closer? Does one of you want to sit in a chair and make it...
You're fine.
We improvise around here, you guys. Flexible and spontaneous.
Everybody where they can see it? Oh, they're holding it up.
You may want to drop it down just to...
No, actually, put it up some more.
You're covering up the kids.
That's right. We could let them have their seats.
Is that better now? Is that good, Rick?
Yeah.
It won't hurt him, will it, Jerry?
Can you see this young lady over here on the end in your picture?
Hmm. I don't think we've ever had this many photographs taken before.
You feel like a popper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Teresa.
Wait, wait, wait. Back up.
Jog back up here.
It's not recess yet. Still got work to do.
I remember when that was, when I was...
What's recess?
Reese, you like recess?
Ready?
It's your favorite class.
Upshur County Proclamation 2013. Whereas, the Upshur County Commission values the health and safety of all of our citizens. And whereas, substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. Whereas, it is the goal of the Upshur County Red Ribbon Campaign and the Upshur County Commission to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. Whereas, the Upshur County Red Ribbon Campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. Whereas, there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Campaign in Upshur County. The theme this year is "A Healthy Me is Drug-Free." Now, therefore, the County Commission of Upshur County does hereby proclaim October 21 to October 25, 2013, as Red Ribbon Week in Upshur County, West Virginia, and urges all citizens to join in the week's activities and to work all year long to protect our community from the dangers of drugs and alcohol.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Same sign, motion carries. And we've got a whole bunch of ayes back there. Good job. All right, well, let's roll right along. We have Approved Records Management and Preservation Grant Application Resolution, $10,000. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Sure, this is a continuation. I think this is maybe the third year that they are going to get this grant. This is in the Circuit Clerk's Office. It's an effort to preserve all of the records that they have. I think this is covering records from eight, let's see here. They're very old records.
Hold on.
1890 to 1898. So, in an effort to make sure that we preserve those records and they don't fall apart from people handling them, they applied for this grant. They were awarded the grant last year, and it helps them put those files onto a digital format. So, this is just the application for next year.
To preserve them for...
Postarity.
Postarity.
Yep.
All righty. So, we have a motion to approve and authorize the President to sign any and all documents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Same sign, motion carries. Review and approve IBM Hardware and Software Maintenance Agreement with the AS400 commuter system, Computer Systems Software Systems Incorporated.
And this is, our AS400 is a computer system that pretty much every office uses, our payroll's on there, all sorts of stuff. And it seems that the version that we have right now is being phased out. So, we can either pay an extension price to continue getting service on that operating system, or we can upgrade to the new operating system. We'd have to pay sort of, I guess, not really a penalty, but we have to pay extra to have them continue to serve at this version. And we will have to upgrade to 6.1 eventually anyway, I believe. So, I talked to our bookkeeper, and our opinion is that we might as well just go ahead and upgrade it now.
What was that cost upgrade?
I think the cost to upgrade is $2,500. That's the memory upgrade, and then the actual installation of the software is $2,300. So, the cost to upgrade right now is a little bit more expensive than to pay the extension price, but I believe that we would have to upgrade eventually anyway.
Right. Okay, so, do we have a motion to upgrade at this point?
So moved.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to ensure this is not the same system used in the Affordable Healthcare Act system, is it?
No.
Okay, so make sure.
Is it compatible with that one?
We would hope it's not.
I mean, nothing's compatible with that. Okay, all in favor say aye. Same sign, motion carries. Review and approve Workers' Compensation from the Lindham, West Virginia, County's Group Self-Inurance Risk Pool.
Long name. But this is just, they indicated that they did not receive this back when we sent back in all of our renewals for the new fiscal year for insurance. So, this is just the workers' comp side of our insurance. Just, you know, every fiscal year, we've had workers' comp for about three or four years, I think. So, this is just additional...
It's the paperwork we need.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this and authorize the President to sign the documents?
So moved.
All second.
All in favor say aye. Same sign, motion carries. Next item, review and approve ride-along application of the County Sheriff's Department request by Danny C. Stumpf. Did you have a conversation with the sheriff to check this out a little further?
I actually haven't had a chance to talk to the sheriff. I've left him some messages, but I believe he's pretty busy this week. But I did talk to the risk pool about this, and they indicated that as long as we have important pieces of policy in the agreement, there are certain restrictions and things such as, you know, they recommend that we only do it during the daytime, that there be restrictions as to what sort of emergency the sheriff can respond to if he has someone who's riding along, that the individual who rides along is doing it with a purpose. For instance, if it's a student studying criminal justice in school, that they have a real purpose to be there, it's not just, you know, to have fun.
Just the joy of the ride.
Right, yeah. And I believe that Danny Stumpf, the individual who would like to do the ride-along this time, is anticipating a career in the law enforcement field. I believe he has, I believe he has a job already lined up. So, he does have a reason for wanting to go on this ride-along. And we have additional, our insurance company gave us some additional procedures, policies, waivers, things that they recommend that we have them sign. So, I have yet to go over this with the sheriff, but I thought that you might want to look at that and then either, I don't know if you want me to talk to the sheriff and have him approve this first, or if you want to approve this or deny it, or, you know, whatever, pending getting all the paperwork together.
I think if the risk pool's the main thing, if they're, if they concur pending the paperwork documentation that they recommended, I think that's our main concern, isn't it, gentlemen? The liability to us.
I don't think they're recommending it. I just think they are saying that they limit the liability if something does happen.
Correct?
Right, they said that in these situations where you can control who is riding along, and there's a real purpose for them to be there. And when you have control over some of the other instances, such as, one thing in there is that if there is an emergency situation that they have to respond to, that is not something that the individual riding along would be safe doing, that they would drop him off at a safe location, call 911 to have another officer come pick that person up. I mean, so there are things in place to kind of ensure safety for the officer, the person riding along, anybody else involved.
Well, what we might do is maybe check with the sheriff and explain to him what the requirements of the risk pool are, and first see if he's willing to abide by those. I think that might be the first thing to do, and see what his willingness is to do, and then, but our decision would be based upon first criteria of him willing to follow those policies and recommendations of the risk pool. And then, once we find that out, then we could deliberate.
Okay.
And then, maybe a possibility, when you limit it to the time, that Mr. Stumpf doesn't want to do it during daylight hours, or, you know what I mean?
Right, and check and see if that, if those restrictions recommended create an issue of concern or unwillingness to follow those, then it won't be an issue.
Okay.
And is Stumpfism from Upshur County, is he?
I don't believe so. I have his...
It seemed to me like they were from Lewis County and worked in Dodger's County.
Was it Kelly something? He was from like Dodger's County was where he worked.
Worked in Lewis, maybe.
He worked for Dodger's County EMS.
I guess my question is, why does he want to ride here in Upshur County when he's Dodger's and, you know what I mean? Is there some reason that the county of Dodger's or whatever is not letting him ride?
Well, you could find that, you could ask those questions also. Okay, next item is approval of Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility Volunteer Mercedes Jacobs. Do we have all of our paperwork and documentation signed and everything?
We do.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Well, that looks like, that brings us down to, anything else that you ladies want to add?
I believe Dennis wanted to just address you all for a moment.
Okay. Step right up there to the podium, Dennis.
Good morning.
Good morning Dennis.
Good morning Dennis. And for the folks at home, good evening. In July of 2003, I started a company called Mountain State Video Imaging. It's a full-blown video production house, it's in Tenderton now. Two years later, I turned it over to my technician, Rodney Urban Jr. And a year later, we were given permission to start running Channel 3 with that company. Well, it's been 10 years, and we're going to be celebrating our 10th anniversary, and the public is welcome to come. And everybody's welcome to come, this is an invite to the commissioners and the staff and everybody. This Saturday, at the American Legion Hall, between 3:00 and 6:00, we'll have an open house. Come on down, tell us what you like about the programming, tell us what you don't like about the programming, have some refreshments, see some product showing on the big screen. And I just thought I'd let you know about it. You're more than welcome to come. If you didn't receive a written invitation, this is it.
Okay, well, we appreciate the invitation, and we appreciate the, and I'm sure the folks that... Well, it looks like that brings us down to, anything else that you ladies?
I believe Dennis wanted to just address you all for a moment.
Okay, step right up there to the podium, Dennis.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dennis.
And for the folks at home, good evening. In July of 2003, I started a company called Mountain State Video Imaging. It's a full-blown video production house. It's in Tenerton now. Two years later, I turned it over to my technician, Rodney Urban Jr., and a year later, we were given permission to start running Channel 3 with that company. Well, it's been 10 years, and we're going to be celebrating our 10th anniversary, and the public is welcome to come, and everybody's welcome to come. This is an invite to the commissioners and the staff and everybody. This Saturday, at the American Legion Hall, between 3:00 and 6:00, we'll have an open house. Come on down, tell us what you like about the programming, tell us what you don't like about the programming, have some refreshments, see some product of showing on the big screen. And I just thought I'd let you know about it. You're more than welcome to come. If you didn't receive a written invitation, this is it.
Okay, well, we appreciate the invitation, and we appreciate the, and I'm sure the folks that receive TV3 appreciate the service provided with this company.
Let me face the camera here a second, Rick. Okay. The thing you saw earlier, if I may put a little bit of a commercial in here, the Red Ribbon Week presentation you saw earlier was because the Red Ribbon Committees wanted to get the word out to the public. They came here and used County Commission as a stepping stone to get the word out to the public. If you're interested in sponsoring a program, sponsor County Commission, please. You can get the word out to the public. There are many people that watch County Commission, and you're more than welcome to advertise with us. It's not real expensive. Come on down to the open house and talk with us about the pricing and that, and see some of our product. All right, that's the end of my commercial.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your many years of supporting the community through.
Oh, you're welcome. For sure. Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, Megan, do you have anything?
That's Holly.
Jennifer? You gentlemen have anything?
I think, did you have something you want to advise us of, Rick, that was happening?
Okay, yes. Actually, I was going to ask Megan for permission to go ahead and put some of our posters for the Buchanan Choral Society on October 27th, who will be holding its fall concert at Wesleyan University at the chapel. We wanted to invite everybody in the public, of course, to come along and see some of the great singers. We've got over 60 singers in this choir, and a benefit this year is we're going to have another full orchestra, which if you've never been to a choir with a orchestra, it is just a moving time and emotional. It's all about fall. I will go ahead and remind you that we have our Christmas concert also that'll be in December, but I'm letting everybody know, and we'd love to have you guys there, too. I know J.C. really appreciates choir and the orchestra, particularly last year's concert. So, that's October 27th, and that's going to be at Wesleyan University at 3:00 PM. So, thank you for your time, and let me do that, buddy.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Does anyone have anything else? Carrie, you was kind of scared this morning. You came in and wasn't any place to sit for a while. He thought, what did I miss? I didn't get the word. Okay, well, we will start working on our paperwork then.